Extremely slow.
No, no.
Okay. Maybe October next year.
Oh, okay.
Miles Kelly, you're on Candid and Ron, you're writing the mail.
Oh, there you go. It's all about the.
It's all about you, what you said?
Yep, I'm in the eye candy. I got a text today from a parent when I was going over to the eye doctor complaining about the sun, the sunshine off of my bald head as I drove my car blinded him out the corner.
You have got to be kidding.
No, no, I actually got a phone call. It wasn't a text. It was a phone call.
He was joking, right?
Yes, he was joking.
Well, people are a little testy these days. I didn't know.
If I didn't know it was him, I would have swerved.
It's not running.
There's a theater over there, but it was the sun was right and I was like, oh, and I was over and I could see the car coming. It was on a hairpin. Then he calls me and starts giving me a hard time.
Nobody's on yet, so that's not good.
We could pass. I think we have about seven votes left.
You have a pack every day.
About five thousand virtual packs. Five days.
How many, how many bus are you, where your trucks are?
A semi?
Yeah.
About just over a thousand, around a thousand, give or take packaging. Five weeks ago, ten semi loads and they've taken six. They have two sitting there and nothing. Now that it's like, can't even get them to return an email. So. We have that.
It'd be gone, huh?
Yeah. We did have the semi load and pulled down the second highway a couple of times. Just before Thanksgiving.
Yes.
That's good. Take a push on it.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I would guess the store, I don't think we would have moved on yet.
Yeah, because I already started it.
I'll try to guess that this is.
It's school board candidacy stuff. I know.
Okay, I'm recording now.
You ready?
I'm ready.
All righty, call the order of verification of meeting notice.
I suppose it is on the web.
We're going to two then roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriant, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manny, Mrs. Peterson. Mrs. Rowe.
Here, and Mrs. Blazensky's also here.
Mrs. Blazensky.
Three then approve of the agenda.
I will also approve of it.
The movement, Mr. Brisboy is second by Mrs. Rowe. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say goodbye, say a aye.
Aye.
And opposed. As he carries on. Four then discussion possible action on status of in-person slash virtual schooling.
All right, we have talked long and hard about this. Kathleen and Chris will also share. But I, I asked Rose to give us her opinion in writing form. She gave me this email and I just printed it for you. I'll read it for the people online. I continue to support giving it because students receive their educational experiences virtually. Please feel free to share these comments and quotes at the school meeting. According to the Department of Health Services, DHS, COVID-19 remains very contagious and most people in Wisconsin are still at risk of getting sick from the virus. They also report that as of November 30th, there have been 1,066 outbreak investigations at educational facilities, 786 of which remain active. COVID-19 disease activity between November 11 and 24 was at critically high levels in all but seven Wisconsin counties. Richland County had critically high levels with case burden of 1,445.3 cases per 100,000 residents. On November 30th, Wisconsin Central Healthcare Emergency Readyness Coalition, region, the region in which Richland County is located, reported that 81% of all staffed hospital beds were occupied. Of 292 patients diagnosed with COVID-19, 74 were receiving care in the ICU. And the total number of ventilators available in the region of seven, 377, 109 cases were currently receiving mechanical ventilation. And then she's also got a comment from wispolitics.com from the latest White House Task Force. Says the infection rate in Wisconsin children ages four to 17 has more than tripled since August 30th. And finally, this morning, and this was a couple of days ago, it was reported that a Madison East High School student has tragically died of complications of COVID. So she encourages board members to continue to safeguard ethical students by extending the timeframe for virtual instruction. Please know that I deeply understand how difficult it is for parents and guardians to educate their children using this format. It is not a recommendation that I make lightly. So in regards to that, the admin team would like to recommend that we stay closed until after Christmas break. Pulled out the calendar. It's hard on the kids to go back and forth, back and forth. And since New Year's is on the first. And we hope to be able to start school on the fourth if all the cases have died down. Now, in my opinion, I don't celebrate New Year's, so I don't, it's not a big thing for me. That's two weeks from Christmas. So January 1, Christmas is here. So that, you know, if we were to go to school here, it would have been at least a week and a half. If you guys feel that there's a lot of parties on New Year's and all that kind of stuff, and again, that's not big at my house, then I would recommend we start on the 11th. To get that extra week of staying home and quarantining. I don't know what kind of parties people go to, so like I said, in my house, it's not that.
Wild party at a mess.
No.
Outside on January.
Yeah, there you go. So, and again, part of that is to just get the discussion going about Mr. Lechner and Ms. Champagne. And Ms. Shane has comments also.
Again, and since they can't, I don't, I'm watching for this phone. I told Chris to call and if it lights up, then I'll pick it up.
I'm on Kathleen.
Oh.
Well, it doesn't look like they can talk on this one. Good. You want to go, Chris?
No, go ahead.
So I had my staff meeting last Tuesday and asked the staff, I told them I wanted to hear everybody's opinion. And so while they talked about it, I wrote down and so then I compiled my thoughts, shared it with them, and they gave me feedback. So now I share with you and the people that are home. Virtual or in-person, what do we do? This weighs heavily on my mind, like really heavily, as it does everyone in this room. So we all want what's best for children, but we all have to consider the health and safety as well. So those two aren't meshing right now. My first question was, what's best for children when it comes to education? A safe environment, their health, their friends' health, their teachers' health, their family's health. A happy teacher, face-to-face learning, learning opportunities provided by their quality, qualified teacher who they know and love. A place to learn and grow without worry. That's what's best for children. What can impact a child's learning? Worry for themselves, their mom or dad, their teacher, their friends. Consistency can impact a child's learning, a broken routine, as Julie mentioned, the back and forth, loss of instruction because of that. Day-to-day, not knowing what to expect, adults in their lives angry or worried, teacher worried or stressed. Broken focus in the classroom, friends in the room and through the computer. What impacts a child's learning? Connections with teachers. So what do we recommend as an elementary? We had a very, we had an hour-long conversation about this. Pros and cons are brought to light. I have staff that are firm at both weights. When it all came down to it at the end, we said safety came first. We feel students being safe and learning virtually until the COVID spread decreases and continues to decrease is best. Having a consistent routine and not bouncing back and forth, in-person and virtual, whether it's the whole school doing it or just within their own family. It's very hard for them, the children. The teachers genuinely, genuinely care about their students and their students' families. They recognize the difficulty for their families of remaining virtual. But then we discussed the mental stress of health, safety, stringently maintaining protocols so spread does not occur in the building. Students in and out due to quarantine, how when teaching in-person and virtual students simultaneously, neither group gets the best. Routine is so important for young learners. Caregivers and teachers have been working together so well and a routine is now in place. Returning to in-person on the seventh will disrupt this routine and time will then have to be spent re-establishing an in-person routine. Then add the thrill of the holiday and winter vacation two weeks later. By remaining virtual through the holidays and winter break, we will, we can continue the routine that's in place now, which allows for a longer period of consistency in learning. So as a staff, we ask to remain in virtual learning modality through the week after Christmas and reevaluate the statistics at that time. Regardless, and we all understand this is a board's decision and whatever it is, we will support it. But regardless, we are committed to our students, their education, but also their well-being. So with the COVID positives, and this goes off a little bit with Rose, what Rose had said, and this is one of the teachers that wrote this. With the COVID positives and the increasing death rates Richland County is currently experiencing, I think a quote, "What's best for the community mindset is in order." Yes, it's not ideal for students, families or school staff, but this is an exceptional time, asking for exceptional measures. We need to take proper steps staying alive and well to get all of us to the point where vaccines and other effective treatments are plentiful. As professionals, we need to listen to other professionals, our medical staff. The hospitals are full. Ill people are being asked or sent to field hospitals or are remaining in the ER. Medical staff are being asked to work additional shifts in order to meet the needs of their patients while their own may be out for COVID reasons. Is bringing groups of people together the responsible thing to do at this time when we have the ability to continue learning in a safer, more responsible manner at home? So I contacted Chaz Burnley, who I highly respect. He is the vice president and chief nursing officer at the Richland Hospital. He's also, I've known him for 16 years. I asked for his opinion as a healthcare professional, which he gave me, but he said that he is not acting as a spokesperson. This is him as a medical professional. So he's been at Richland, I don't know, two or three years. He was at Soft Prairie for probably, well, ever since I've known him. And I quote what he, what he emailed me. I continue to feel it would be a bit irresponsible to return to in-person schooling at this time. There has been a relatively steady decrease of daily COVID positive patients in the state since our single day high of 7,989 on November 18th. This steady decrease over the past two weeks could likely be the result of extra caution being exercised by the public along with virtual schooling, which has worked well to quote, flatten the curve. The recent decrease, coupled with the encouraging news that a vaccine, vaccine seems to be fairly near in the future, leads me to believe we should extend virtual learning and other public measures at least until after Christmas break. Although we've seen a slow, steady, two-week decrease in numbers, we still, just yesterday, and he emailed this to me today, experienced our highest daily death rate in the state at 105. That's a bit scary in that it signifies we need to do a better job of protecting our most vulnerable populations as it's not the young and healthy who are dying. So those are my thoughts and the thoughts, compiled thoughts of our staff.
Mr. Lechner, did you have some comments?
Yes. Thanks Kathleen. Basically, all that you were saying is what our middle and high school teachers and paraprofessionals had said. We had a meeting last week. We actually had a, a vote. Everybody had to vote. They had to vote in front of everyone else and show by hands. And everyone except one person voted that we would stay virtual. Now, we all understand it is much better to have the kids in person and that they learn better that way. And we also miss the kids and all the teachers do miss the kids. But to just highlight some of the things that Kathleen had said, to disrupt them for a week and a half or so to come back and the risk that I think we're putting people at, I don't think that would be smart. I also think, or I would also like to say that I saw this quote from another administrator. And it, it was, "In the end, it will be impossible to know if we overreacted or if we did too much. But it will be quite apparent if we underreacted or did too little." I think the kids are in a, a state now where they understand what they need to do. I think the teachers have been doing a good job with it. It took a while to get all the kinks out, but I think going forward and talking with other administrators that actually have been virtual for a lot longer than us. You know, they said that the longer you go, the better it's been working out for them. And the teachers wanted to make sure that I reiterated that we certainly know that it's, that kids learn better in person. But given all the circumstances, and let's be honest, we're in a worldwide pandemic that we think virtual is probably the best way to go.
And then one other small thing to point out is that we have had one staff member get an excuse from the doctor that they cannot teach if the children are here. So we will allow that person to teach from home, but there goes one of our full-time subs. So that's going to put an additional burden and we have had, at the end of the, we'll accept them, but we have had two staff members resign. So we're, we're slowly but surely, we're been, I think we've been very lucky to have all the subs that we have had available so far. It's really going to put a pinch on us if we have staff members and I. It's not that this person is using it as an excuse. They literally have an issue. They can't be here with students. And they even talked about the air exchange in the building. Something I didn't think of. We talked a little bit about it, but we figured if they were six feet apart and all that stuff. But it's, it's becoming more and more evident that that is a possibility that more staff members might have to do that for their own personal safety. Which is going to harm the education in the long run anyway.
And that's the truth. So right now, we're sitting with, all of our certified staff are here. If, and who, and if then, if what, whatever, but you know, before we were close to closing because of staff people. And so if that comes again, then the quality of what the kids are getting is going to be less. It's as good as we can get it right now virtually because everybody, all our certified teachers are here working. That could change if, you know, now we have flu season, so you might have flu symptoms that mimic COVID, which puts you out. And then if we're short people to supervise within the building, I mean, we could start up on, on Monday and be Thursday, be out again. I mean, that's just the reality. We have a good routine and Chris and I are working really hard. We've got the parents now in the elementary helping the kids and the teacher is doing small group. They're zooming with the, with the other little kids, Ms. Hillby and Ms. Jones and Ms. Harris are helping in the high school. And you know, we're doing as, giving as much support as we can virtually and we have a routine. It could change.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, I'll make a comment on the fact that I'm, you know, I'm hearing from, well, you know, this is one perspective. I'm getting from the parents. And I'm sitting here at a store uptown and I have a parent come up to me saying, the students, my child needs to be back here in person. And they break into tears. And while I'm sitting there, I have a parent and a student from this school sitting there and not wearing a mask in the checkout. And you, you know, the whole thing here and I've got repeatedly parents now sitting there saying, our children. I have a parent that sent me the report card showing going from an A to an F. Because, and they're directly correlating it and they're saying it, their students say it and the parents say it. It's because going from in-person, A, virtual, F. And so that's extremely difficult for me to sit there and say, you know what, let's just kick it, kick the can down, you know, you know, let's, you know, the education, that education is going to stick with them forever. And it's very difficult for me to hear, you know, having parents come up to me. And I've not had a parent yet come up to me, and I'm not saying it doesn't exist, but I haven't had a parent yet come up to me and say, you need to be, these kids need to stay virtual. Hundred percent of the parents have said they need to, that have communicated with me. Most do not. And I'm, this is just a small sampling. The same with even the stats that Rose cites. These are statewide stats. These are generalizations. I like to have a little more specific, but it may not matter. But what I'm hearing is from the parents and they're consistently, that message is crystal clear, without waiver. The students should be back. Our children need to be back in school, in person, because of their education.
So that's. Yes, I agree. As a parent, I've wrote in and I have emailed teachers and the teachers are doing well. But yes, it is, it is imperative. These kids are breaking down. They're crying. They're in high school and they're doing this. They need that. They need it. They need to be back in school. Valley has decided as of today to go back for two weeks. They start Monday. We need this. The kids need this. I know it's scary. It's scary times, but these kids are mentally starting to get anxiety. They're getting depressed. They're not wanting to zoom in. They're not wanting to do their schoolwork. They need this. They need to get back.
I do think there's the other side of the coin, that if, if we come back and then we don't have staff, it's more of a babysitting situation than an educational system. There are not a lot of subs out there. There are not a lot of extra teachers out there. We have not had them knocking on our door saying, we will help in any way we can. And so I do not look at it as that the education is going to move forward if we don't have the staff to do the educating.
And we agree with you, Ron. It's best here. But when our own, you know, Soft Prairie Health two weeks ago said, stay home, they recommended. Our hosp, our own hospital and they're full. We haven't even hit, it's still like 40 degrees today. It was beautiful. You know, what happens when, when we have, you know, that will, that will impact. I, I get it. And I get that kids are stressing. If we have someone either on staff or in our family die from it, that will impact kids as well. And so safety has got to trump right now until we get, like you said, a vaccine or get through this. Because if we start losing our staff, they're not going to get the education that they're here for. Because the people that are there to provide it won't be there.
Do you think this environment in this school is unsafe?
No, Ron.
Compared to their homes? I mean, there, there, I think in some cases, I look at this, it's like, and that comment has been made at previous board meetings, I view this as a safe environment.
I agree.
Because I look at what, just what you did before this. You cleaned this table off. And I know that we have the maintenance staff and I've watched the teachers. I was invited in by Ms. Durkin and Ms. Willis and Ms. Nuker to observe. And that was, that was excellent for me to see in the efforts that they have to go through. And they're sanitized. They're going above and beyond. They didn't go to get their certification. You didn't get your certification on how to clean, sanitize. And, but I view this in not every case, but in most cases, I understand that there's a lot of bodies here. But from, when I sit there and I see people out and, and I had a parent comment that you somehow think that, you know, doing this is going to keep these kids from going out or the parents going out and partying, you know, Julie maybe, you know, not going on New Year's Eve or Christmas or Thanksgiving. There's people that, you know, they don't care. They don't care what's going on and that's a concern. And to me, this is a better environment for them to be in than being at home and being idle hands. Yes, they got to be attended the, the school virtually, but when they have people coming and going into their households and I understand they're going to bring it in, potentially bring it to school, but here we require the mask and we're requiring the sanitation or we're doing that. And that's to me what I, I, you know, when we, there's almost a belief that it's safer for them to be at home or safer not to be in school than it is to be here. And I don't agree with that. Just because I, I witness people, you know, in their everyday lives, out and about, not wearing masks. They're, they're, they, you know, this is, becomes a political issue or whatever the reason may be. I don't, I don't know. But, you know, I've always viewed this school as a, as a safer environment than in most cases than what they have at their home, in their home environments. And that's the, you know, the, when I view it, sometimes it contradicts what Rose and them are saying. And I understand what Rose and them, I hear it from every county health department that I listen to. But that's the, the trouble that I have is that there's almost a perception that the schools are not as, are not a safe environment as it is at home when it comes to, you know, well, anyway. But that's how I, I, I trouble with that. I struggle with that because I see this environment and what the efforts are being done by the faculty and staff to, to keep this a safe environment. And I, I certainly believe in it. I feel comfortable coming here. Whereas if I wanted to, if I go into stores, I don't feel that way than I, as I do coming into this environment. And so I just, that's the one, one dilemma that I have is that I view this as safe. And the belief that being at home is a safer environment than students being here. And I guess I'm not, I haven't been sold on that yet.
Ron.
Go ahead.
If I could speak to the grade thing a little bit. I was the same as you. When I saw our nine-week report cards and our Ds and Fs, I was, I was pretty surprised. So within a day, we called a staff meeting with the middle and high school and looked at different ways that we could connect with the kids a little bit better. But I also did a pretty deep data dive on them. And then I sent a letter to each of the parents in high school with the kids that did have a failing grade. And I'd say about 95% of it was because they either did not zoom in or they did not hand in their work. And I think that maybe some of the parents didn't realize that until they got the letter from me. So again, we, we're all concerned about that and we are trying different ideas on how to minimize that and to reach out and make better connectivity with the kids. So we did see the, you know, quite a bit of Ds and Fs. So we again are trying to address that situation.
I get what you're saying and I totally, I, I've heard from some parents too. And it's, there's no perfect solution, but I guess at this point, my concern is there was earlier in the year when we had the two teachers who are quitting and we had the teacher who now can't be here and you almost didn't have enough staff. So now we're down three teachers if we come back in person. And I guess I'm concerned about, what, what are we going to do about that?
But that is a concern of mine is losing, losing staff.
Yeah. Well, not even, we already lost.
I know.
That's what I just said. Yeah. So I'm wondering how we would handle that if we come back. Is there any thought of that? If the board happens to vote tonight that we have to come back, what is the plan for?
The plan is for one of the, one of the teaching staff that is leaving is for one of our new full-time subs will become a, will teach through, through the, sorry, through the rest of the semester. It's, we'll post it and try to, you know, fill it for the second semester, freeing that person up then. And then the other one, yep, I reached out to one of our subs yesterday or the day before to try to figure out what we can do. So.
And the teacher who can't come to school if students are here?
That one, that one I don't.
In that classroom.
Okay.
So we have to have a full-time person in that classroom.
Right, because that is seven hours of classes.
So we don't, we don't currently have an answer for all three spots?
Nope, not currently.
So Ron, what, what was, when you saw the, the staff and trying to do both virtual, I mean, because I have not come in. How was that going?
Well, you know, I, I always, you know, and I'm married to a teacher and always impressed with what they, what they can do and how they do what they do. You know, with, with Ms. Durkin, it was, you know, I felt for, you know, they were making ceramics and how, you know, and, and, you know, she had, I think, three that were virtual that day. And luckily her, at least of hers, she, her class was the only one of the three that I did not see a, a loss in service or a glitch in the internet service, a hiccup in the internet service. But, you know, I talked to her a bit about, well, what do you do about those three that, because this is extremely hands-on. And, you know, no matter what, how she teaches it, unless they have a tape recorded to be able to go back and watch how Peg does that. But, you know, she made the comment about, well, what's challenging is she'll put out the clay for them. But, you know, she made the comment about, well, what's challenging is she'll put out the clay for them. And hopefully the parent comes and picks it up. But it seemed to work well for them, but it's a, it's just like watching Bob Ross paint versus you actually painting it. Uh, it's not, it's not the same. And hopefully they, they were able to follow up with that. Ms. Willis's seemed to be, go well, but I can't sit there and, you know, from the perspective of, I didn't sit at the, at the student's desk or the, the students at home. You don't really get, you know, I don't know, like, you know, I, it's no different than me watching, I suppose, a, a class. Obviously there is a loss. There's something lost. I thought Ms. Willis did, um, handled it very well. They did have a glitch. They lost one of the, I think she had four students that were virtual. One fell off, uh, lost connection, connectivity. And they did what they could and she had an aide, um, in, in, in the room with her. Ms. Newkirk was completely, um, virtual with two, two students, um, at the time. So that wasn't really a, a good comparison. And she was doing as well, well, she could, but it's still, I know that, right, watching that, you know, being able to see her face, being able to work with her, it's much, and she's teaching, uh, was, I think, first graders, was some basic, uh, sounds, reading. So it was, I was, I, I thought it went smoothly. I guess I didn't sense the stress, but I'm there for 10, 15 minutes, you know, 20 minutes. I think, but by now I think they're getting used to it, but it was, uh, that was the one thing that was really quite, you know, it was certainly an eye opener for me. And I can't necessarily explain it. It's, it's more, you know, the fact that when the teachers are surveyed though, that certainly to me, you know, that very question, do we go or no go, you know, in person or stay virtual? That's, I certainly respect their perspective because they're the ones that know better. They know far more than I ever, they forgot more about teaching, I don't know. So that's why. It was interesting, but it's fascinating to watch.
Any other questions, comments?
This is Julie Thompson. I wondered if I could just speak briefly about a, a para's perspective or some of our special educators. I don't know if any of you have helped your children with homework at home, but you have to be pretty close to, you know, you're pointing at numbers or, or trying to correct their handwriting or something. So when you're trying to help someone and you're trying to stay six feet apart so that if I have COVID or the student has COVID, that neither one of us can exchange that and we're both wearing a mask. Or we're trying to correct the pronunciation of Fs and Ths. You, you really struggle doing that. I know it's not easy to do it over a computer. But at least in a computer, I can use a mouse to kind of guide where I'm looking. Or I have more one-on-one in a situation where there's not 15 other students or other adults listening. There might be an, a parent or a grandparent on the other end, and so she can kind of follow along with the student that I'm helping. And it's far from ideal. But I feel trying to give some one-on-one help in a classroom right now, person face-to-face is far more difficult than it is for me to help someone over a computer.
Any other questions, comments?
If I could make a brief comment here, uh, I'm in a unique position up here in Toma where people have no concept of what to do with this virus. So we have uncontrolled spread here. Anyway, I'm able to stay home during the day with, with my special needs daughter. And yes, it's, it's not easy, but to echo Kathleen's sentiments, uh, we're making it work. We're getting the bugs figured out. And I think we're doing the best we can under the situation. I think it is safer than being in class. Thank you.
I'd like to say something. As a 30-year daycare provider and working with the kids here at school, I don't think we can risk coming back for two weeks. I think we'd be better off to wait until after the first of the year. Let them stay in the continuity of virtual for two more weeks. Would be a lot safer and a lot more constructive to those kids than bringing them back to school. Or you're already stressing the teachers to the point we don't have enough to cover all our bases. And hopefully people get better and can handle things in January. But to jack these kids back and forth for two more weeks and then find out next week you don't have enough teachers and then you're going to have to close again. Right now, the parents, I know parents want these kids back here. Don't get me wrong. I want these kids back here. I just don't think it's smart. It's not safe because we don't know where those kids all have been in those last three weeks, for one thing, with having Thanksgiving. And then you turn around and throw them back here for two more weeks and kids are hyper during Christmas. And thinking isn't always right there anyway during this time period with kids. I just, I just don't think it's wise not to go. It's not wise to start back up. I just think it'd be so much better to wait till January.
Any questions, comments?
I just say, you know, this, you know, all of us have gone through these decisions and when you sit up here and have to make that decision, you have to look at it from all the sides, you know, we don't get the luxury of, of saying, okay, we're, you know, this is how it impacts me. And it, it's getting harder and harder to vote to stay virtual just because we know it's not good to keep the kids. We know that the learning isn't as good. But also, you know, I look at what, you know, what the teachers, what the teachers have gone through and what we've gone through in virtual and, and if we go and come back in a week from now, have to go virtual again. Then we, we've undone a lot of the, you know, advancements we've made in the, in the day-to-day virtual routine, which we know is not the best situation, but disrupting that is really going to set us back. And that's, you know, what has me looking at. I think every time I vote on one of these, I try and look at the situation we're in now. Situation we're in three weeks ago, as we know, isn't the same. Situation we might be in two weeks from now, we don't know what that is. We have to look at where we are now. And to me, the most concerning thing is the staffing situation. You know, we, we know we need to get the kids back in school. That's where they learn the best. That's where they, you know, that's why we have schools. That's why, why we hired the teachers and put them in the best situation they can. But we know whose subs are impossible. Other schools have won. And if we get a, you know, if we get a week from now, the end of next week and we have, you know, two or three cases in the high school, puts you out, right? You know, two or three cases and one case in a couple of classes in elementary, you know, puts two or three classes out. And then we gotta put those kids back. It's, it's not a good situation, but if we had to do that, it would be a terrible situation from that standpoint.
Other questions, comments?
I, I got a comment. I, I got a boy that's in jeopardy of not graduating because of this. Are we going to soften the requirements a little bit then? You know, that's my question.
One of the things that we've been talking about and, um, I probably have talked about it even more with Mr. Lechner today, but he was ill. Of pulling, pulling individual kids and working with them, either one-on-one through Zoom. We actually have one aide going to a home or two to help some kids get caught up. So there are other options that, you know, we really need to, we can, we can do a few different things with those students. And we, we want the kids to learn. We want to make sure that they're getting their credits. I don't, I don't, um, if they're, if they're a senior and they need that one credit, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, you know, we're gonna do everything we can to help them.
I believe that's even been addressed at the state level, at least in the things that I've been reading. That it's not focusing on the grades. But I think the other thing that we have to look at is, I think we have students who are perfectly capable of handling and handing in their work that are just thinking this is kind of a free ride. And, um, you know, I think there's that side of the coin too, that, um, you know, I've heard somebody who was kind of bragging that the parents signed them in, that they don't necessarily get up till noon. And, you know, I mean, that it's not a joke. It's not a joke. You know, especially if these kids are planning to go on to college and, and things like that. A lot of times you're not face-to-face with anybody, but maybe a TA. So I, I would hope that, you know, we would get a little bit better reception of handing in, in papers and things like that. Even if they're not complete, they've at least are showing the effort of, of doing something and turning it in. And I'm glad, I'm glad to hear, um, Mr. Lechner that, you know, this is, is being addressed and, um, you know, but there, when you get kids that are 16, 17 and that, they, they need to start assuming a little responsibility. I might be old school, but if we're looking for success in the future for them, that next step, it isn't going to happen.
Yeah. And Meredith and I have looked at the seniors and we've had quite a few meetings with some of the seniors that didn't do so well in the first nine weeks. You know, explaining to them that it's the semester grade that we really look at. So there's certainly time to get things done. But we've looked at each kid and we're trying our best to reach out to them. And we've also even told some of them that they can come in. Uh, we'll separate them and then, um, they'll have a chance to work on things individually.
Other questions, comments?
So now all of the things that kind of have happened between Christmas and New Year's, where the kids are getting together, like the basketball tournaments and the wrestling and lacrosse, that's all been canceled, correct?
Correct. By states canceled.
By, for sure.
That's what Troy told me. Wait, wasn't Troy?
Because I, I'm, I'm asking that as we weigh the fourth and the 11th. And has, you know, if, if there's going to be a lot of this other stuff that, that week in between, then we wouldn't be looking at that many days. That's why I'm asking.
They're only supposed to do dual meets for wrestling.
And, um, you hear me right?
Yep.
All, uh, there's no holiday tournaments, period. It's only, even with basketball, there's no holiday tournaments. There's just, we happen to play LaFare, not LaFares, North Crawford, but it's not a tournament. It's just a game over break.
And then a dual break for wrestling. Yep.
Other questions, comments? Anyone out there? The comments thing isn't working tonight, right Kathleen?
Sure.
But they can unmute.
They can unmute as well. No, there's no, you can't, I don't know.
Because as it stands right now, the last meeting we voted to come back in-person learning next Monday. So if there's no action taken, that's what will occur.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we stay virtual through the holidays and look at coming back January 4th.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. You got, Cheryl, you get it?
Yep.
Moved and seconded to continual virtual learning through the holiday break and returning to school on January 4th. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Blazinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriens?
No.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
No.
Sorry. Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rowe?
Yes.
Motion carries. And on to five, discussing possible action on status of athletics.
I just wanted to make sure that, um, I have had quite a few parents talk to me about, if we're virtual and we're still having athletics, isn't that kind of contradicting? And, um, I said, well, we're bringing it up for discussion. I can tell you that, for a lot of the kids, that's their saving grace. They really like the athletics. They are doing everything they can. And as you know, from the previous seasons, that when there's too many kids with something on a team, it, it just, it doesn't go forward. So even if they're just practicing and get to play one or two games, you know, at least they're practicing in that one or two games rather than not having anything. But I also understand that, and when we don't have school, to have athletics is, is again, a little contradictory.
So I've been called out for being hypocritical on this one. So this was my answer. My answer comes back to something that Summer said to me. Athletics are a choice. So, you know, if you have somebody in your house that you're worried about or you're in contact with somebody, you don't have to do athletics. And also another thing, I don't remember who exactly brought it up or where it came from, but my other argument for this is the fact that, like you said, for some kids, this is, this is their motivation. Like as long as they're doing well in school, they can continue to do athletics. And also some kids love school just because of athletics. So this is their way to stay connected. So for me, I mean, if it's hypocritical, then fine, whatever. I don't care what anybody thinks about that. That's fine. But for me, it comes down to those two things. It's a choice and it helps a lot of kids really stay connected and keep up on their work. So for me, I, I, I don't think that it's that hypocritical.
I wholeheartedly agree with you. I think the one thing, you know, the protocols and the safety things we have in place, it's safer to do athletics here in school than it is to go to Walmart with three quarters of the people not wearing any masks, no social distancing going on. And other places, and if the kids don't have that to look forward to, what keeps them from, you know, because they don't want to get COVID. Because if they get COVID, now they can't practice. They can't play. They can't do anything. So it, it's something to keep them following the safety things. You know, it's, it's, I don't know if you want to say a reward, but it's an incentive for them to, you know, just like always follow the athletic code, follow these, these are all those things that it's more likely those kids are going to stay out of the situations that they shouldn't be in. So they can keep participating, doing those type of things. And you're a hundred percent right. It's a choice. If people are concerned about it, they're concerned about their kids, they're obviously not coming to the games because it's parents only, family only, and it's social distancing and that. Like I said, if it's, you know, if you're, you know, going to, you know, stores or Walmarts or holiday shopping and places like that, you know, if you feel comfortable going out there doing masks, you know, places, there's a lot of places they aren't wearing masks and we're requiring them here. So.
Yeah. I mean, I've had the same thing. And I think one of the things that, you know, it's, I voted for sports. I even, you know, made the motion for one of them. And it was what Mr. Lechner said, that this also will keep some of these kids motivated. You know, so as long as I think that's all being followed, that they are attending school and turning in their work. And again, it's a choice. And, you know, if the, if the parents don't want them, their child, then they don't have to. If they want, they do.
That was also one of the reasons why I, I considered more to vote to stay virtual now is with the, the kids, with us being virtual and the kids that are doing sports. with us being virtual and the kids that are doing sports, wanting to do sports, even if they would have something, they're not spread, you know, they're not have potential to spread to other people. So, you know, by, by still staying virtual, I think that's even more incentive that the sports can go on versus if we were, you know, coming back and then mixing, because we're not mixing. It's the same group of kids that are, that are doing basketball and that, and there's less mixing in the course of a day. So.
We are not unique. You know, I, I think we had some, some districts in the area that I think, can think of one that didn't do fall athletics at all. But our conference schools are all running this, you know, even in the virtual situation, they're allowing that athletics because it is a choice and it is a great motivator. People may not agree, they may not like it. But if you think back to when you were in high school and what was important to you and what would keep you safe and healthy and doing the right thing, maybe it's not the right reason, but they're doing the right thing.
So if you have no motion, we just continue what we have then?
Exactly right.
Okay.
No, no action taken would mean we would continue on with the way it is now.
Okay.
Is there any other questions or comments on the issue?
That's for Steve, but I would, I just want to make it, I, I wanted to comment before and Ron saying that in the community, people aren't wearing masks. That's what's going to shut us down whenever we return because we're, we're not, the community itself is not being responsible for helping to not spread it. And so, yeah, you're right. This is a very clean environment. But bringing kids back that, that haven't been, and I just ask the community to make their kids wear masks. Stay away from people, you know, don't think like, just be away from people.
And to that point, I'm kind of curious, does Rose send this to QuickTrip? Does she send this to Walmart? Does, does Rose send this, make these recommendations? She's sending it to us to make it, to make the hard decision.
Yeah.
Maybe she should.
She has the ability to enforce this, whether they choose to or not. And that's what, to me, is what's frustrating. This school, these institutions do their level best. And but, you know, businesses that don't, they'll sit there and they slap a sign on the wall, they have a person sitting there tabulating and that's it. And they just turn a blind eye to it. And you wonder where it's spreading from or how it's spreading. Well, you don't, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to see it. And you're absolutely right, Kathleen. Well, there, there has to be some personal responsibility taken by the families and the students. Absolutely. It's one of, hopefully one of the great educational occurrences that happen right now. But it's frustrating when we have them write out their doctrine here, this is what we want to see. And yet they're, are they doing it equally and uniformly across the county? I certainly don't hear about it or not seeing it. So that's what's frustrating.
Because Julie asked her for her opinion. I suppose if QuickTrip asked them, asked her for her opinion, she might send them the same thing.
The state says that the county health department is in charge of this.
I agree with you. I know.
Right. And, you know.
Different counties are, like Dean County?
Correct. Yeah, correct.
University, they're nailing it. Other, they're not.
In defense of a few of the businesses, because I've been where they have confronted people and it hasn't been good. And, you know, I mean, I'm sure Kelly can attest to that. I mean, we've got, I can't even use the words, out there.
I've seen it too. I've seen the other side, which is awesome.
You know, so you basically just have to maybe step aside and let them walk in and, you know, I, yeah, it's like, we've got some real, real, whatever you want to call them.
If I could share something that was very sobering to me, as it involves the healthcare, care world, someone who works in that industry, just this week, there was, and it wasn't our original center hospital, it's actually Barroque. But a person came in having a heart attack, having a heart attack, and there was nowhere to send them. They could not, lacrosse would not take them. They ended up being med-planted to the Madison area because they did not have a, for someone who was, they're not, they were not COVID positive. They were a person that needed medical attention and by the time that they were med-planted, they had coded and they had brought him back. Real life, first-person family account of how terrifying it is right now. So we can't, like Ron speaks to that, it's a maddening. There will people, there will be people who will live in car accidents and heart attacks and strokes that would have been well and lived decades longer because of what is going on right now. And we have to come together to try to fix that. I, I echo you with every.
I, yeah, I have three fam- I have three family members that are in the medical field. And every one of them says, if there are beds available, they don't have the staffing to take the patients on. You know, and hospitals are contacting our local hospitals, asking, can we ship patients to you? They said, but we don't have the staff. We have the beds, but we don't have the staff. You know, because.
It works?
Yeah.
Also, I think sometimes, like a biggest lot of concern in being at Walmart, I'm there pretty much every day. And then I hear complaints from parents about why our kids are not back in school. A lot of times it's those parents that are complaining that come into Walmart with no mask on. You know, but they're complaining to me about things, you know, and that's what's more irritating than anything. But then I see their kids have a mask on, which is the main thing, but they're not. And it's blatantly telling me, I don't give a, you know. And that's basically what I hear, because I was manning the table out there one day and I would ask, no, don't need one. No, you know, I'm good. You know, so. And, and like I said, I wish we had that report, you know. We get calls every day, like just today, lady in front of, I was checking out somebody and a lady there and another one behind me and she goes, I would just like to keep that person in the butt because they're not wearing a mask. Okay, so you go for it.
You'll turn around?
I'll be right here to cheer you on. Go for it. And like, like I'm at that point where it's not like saying Walmart's that clean, we're cleaning every day. I'm cleaning that register. I said, my hands are probably like bleached and stuff. But to me, like I said, cleanest environment here, you know, not saying my house ain't clean or anything, you know. A little dusty, but, you know. You know, that's what I.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say, I, I think too, like as a parent and fine studying on the schools, but there was a teacher that was talking about going Black Friday shopping in the Dells. And I think the teachers need to be held to the same standard and also need to be held accountable for their actions if they're going to vote to stay virtual and, and require the support of the parents.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, then we'll move on to six, adjourned to closed session under Wisconsin statute 19.851C for consideration employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Six one in closed session, discussion regarding the performance evaluation of district employees, teaching staff, administration, and or coaching staff. Being closed session, not less than five minutes, but it could be more, probably will. Motion to go into closed session.
I'll solo.
Oh, by Mrs. Blazinski, your second, and Mrs. Rowe.
Mr. Brisboy?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriens?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Manning? Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe?
Yes.
Didn't miss anybody?
Yes.
Mrs. Blazinski?
Yes, I haven't left yet, you know.
Sorry.
No, I think what it was is I copied and pasted.
Oh, thanks, pal.
Okay, then, motion to reconvene in open session.
I'll make that motion.
And Mrs. Peterson is her second. And Mrs. Ferriens, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose? Motion carries. Are you good?
Yeah.
Okay. Discussing possible action on accepting resignations.
So we have received resignation notices from Mr. Kyle Lang and Mrs. Michelle Wabashaw.
So can we do them separate?
I think.
Okay.
Separate.
Okay, so is there a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Kyle Lang? And Mrs. Rose, your second?
I'll second.
And Mrs. Ferriens, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose?
Begrudgingly.
Yeah. And we thank him for his service and wish him well. And the second one is.
Mrs. Wabashaw?
Mrs. Wabashaw, is there a motion to accept resignation from Mrs. Wabashaw?
I'll make that motion begrudgingly.
Mrs. Blazinski, second, and Mrs. Peterson, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And we. We thank her for her many years of service and wish her well in her future.
Just got to be different.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? That's it. Okay. If not, then motion to adjourn. And Mrs. Ferriens, second.
Second.
And Mrs. Blazinski, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.